And good evening and welcome to our Williamsburg County Council meeting, our first meeting of the month, Monday, June 5th, 2023. This is our call to order. If you would, please let us bow our heads for prayer. Most gracious and everlasting Father, Lord God, we thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. Lord, we thank you for life, health, strength, family, community. Father God, as we begin this meeting, we invite the Holy Spirit to come and be a part of this meeting. Father God, we ask you to grant us wisdom. We ask you, Father God, to grant us compassion. We ask you to grant us understanding as we attempt to do the will and the business of the people of Williamsburg County. Lord God, we ask you to be with us, to guide our thoughts, our actions, our words, our deeds, to have everything that we do to be about the upbuilding of your kingdom and the upbuilding of your people. In your most precious and holy name, we pray, amen, amen, and amen. All right, again, thank you all so much for being with us today. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting, which was held May 16th, 2023. Is there a motion?
So moved, Councilwoman Hammond.
All right, there's a motion by Councilwoman Hammond. Is there a second?
Second, Wilson.
All right, there's a second by Councilman Wilson. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. We do not have any ordinances for third reading. There are no ordinances for second reading. And I'm going to ask that we table the ordinance for first reading until we can get some additional information. Is there a motion? Can I get a motion to table this?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion by Councilman Floyd to table this agenda item. Is there a second?
Second, Hammond.
I have a second by Councilwoman Hammond. Are we ready for questioned, questions? All those imposed, all those in favor, excuse me, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item has been tabled to the next meeting. All right, we have a resolution here. Resolution number 2023-05, a resolution authorizing continuing appropriations for fiscal year 2023-2024. Williamsburg County Council is not with reasonable certainty prior to July 1, 2023, determine the necessary collection and allocation of funds for the operation of Williamsburg County, including the water, Williamsburg County Water and Sewer Department for the entire fiscal year 2023-2024. This resolution is basically what we call a continuing resolution for us to be able to continue to operate the government at the existing funding until we can get the budget correct, the budget taken care of, to be able to get our next, get the budget passed for the next fiscal year. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-05?
So moved, Mr. Supervisor.
We have a motion by Councilman Floyd. Is there a second?
Second, Wilson.
We have a second by Councilman Wilson. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has been passed. All right. Other items for our consideration this afternoon? We have an item on the agenda to authorize a grievance procedure to be established to meet the requirements of Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 as amended. The Williamsburg County, as a recipient of community block grant funds, has adopted an internal grievance procedure providing for prompt and equitable resolution of complaints alleging any action by Department of Housing and Urban Development Regulations implementing Section 504. Is there a motion to grant this authorization?
So moved, Mr. Supervisor.
All right, we have a motion made by Councilman Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hammond. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion has been carried. Number two, authorize a reasonable accommodations policy for Williamsburg County. Williamsburg County will provide reasonable accommodations for any disabled individual, providing it does not constitute an undue financial or administrative burden. The request must be made five days prior to the public event hearing. Williamsburg County will also accommodate any disabled job applicant or employee who becomes disabled while working for Williamsburg County. Is there a motion to accept this authorization?
So moved, Hammond.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hammond. Is there a second? We have a second by Councilman Miller. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this motion is carried. We have a transportation agreement here between Williamsburg County and the Medical University, authorizing a transportation service agreement with the Medical University Hospital Authority doing business as Medical University, South Carolina Health Black River Medical Center, a general medical surgical hospital located at 3555 North Williamsburg County Highway, Cade, South Carolina, 29518, which includes a range of inpatient and outpatient services to patients in the surrounding community, whereas the Medical University Hospital Authority has determined that it requires qualified services which shall include transport for discharged patients who lack transportation, whereas public transport service, Williamsburg County Transit System, is qualified to provide such services and desires to provide such services to the Medical University Hospital Authority. Is there a motion to accept this contract?
So moved, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, I had both y'all at the same time.
I'm seconding you.
Okay, so who's that first? Our council, we have a motion by Councilman Wilson, and it's been properly seconded by Councilman Floyd. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has been carried. Ladies and gentlemen, before us tonight, we have our first appearance by Francina B. Heiser, better known as Franny Heiser, who is a partner with Burr and Foreman LLP. Attorney Heiser has been our bond attorney for a number of years. We also have W. Chris Clark, CPA, owner of Paragon Advisory Services LLC. Mr. Clark is providing us with audit preparatory services currently. And then we have Ms. Jeanette Connolly, who's an LLC consultant. Ms. Connolly is a, has been providing us with financial consultation over the last five months. And they wanted to just briefly update us on the financial situation of the county and things that we need to be looking forward to as it relates to the budget and different things that they believe that we may need to do. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Heiser, if she would, please come up to the podium and brief us. So good seeing you, and thank you so much for accommodating us tonight with your, I know you're busy.
I had to be here, Mr. Chairman, members of council. It's always good to be with y'all. And I'm gonna start out by saying, don't shoot the messenger, because I'm here to talk to you about some feedback that we've received as we try to place the debt of the county, particularly the county's tax anticipation note. A tax anticipation note is the tool that you use for your cash flow purposes. You know, your property taxes come in, you know, they're billed in the fall, and they're paid in December and January and February, and you don't really start to get your tax revenue again until that next fall. So a lot of times in the summer months, in September and October, counties, school districts can see that they've got a cash flow problem. Well, y'all have issued a tax anticipation note for just about every year, I think, that I've worked with y'all, and that's been like a lot. I go back, not quite as long as Mr. Billy, but almost. I think I've had the pleasure of working with y'all for about 30 years. And what we're starting to see is that the local banks that we go to and banks outside of the county look at the financial situation of the county, and they are not eager to lend the county money. They have concerns, and I just want to share some of those with y'all tonight, because I think as you decide on your budget for next year and the things that Mr. Clark and Ms. Connolly might talk to y'all about, that you might want to sort of recommit the county to a steady progress, to achieve your financial wellness, if you will. Some many years ago, the county actually lost its credit rating, and that was pretty devastating. And I'm not saying that you're anywhere close to that, but what we want to do is try to stabilize the situation and then have upward progress and no more downward activity. So what I would like to strongly recommend that y'all think about is, obviously, state law requires that you have a balanced budget, but that's really only on paper. You know, budget can look balanced at the beginning of the year, but then as revenues are actually spent during the year, then they can be spent in manners different from your budget, and that results in a deficit. And that's one of the kinds of things that banks look at. Another thing that they would look at is your control of your revenue. Nobody likes to increase tax mileage. Nobody likes to increase taxes. But even the legislature gave county councils the authority to increase taxes on a limited basis, on an annual basis. And I know for last year, the combination of CPI plus growth gave counties and school districts and cities a real bump, because we hadn't had any inflation, really. And since here in Williamsburg, you don't really have population growth, it's that inflation number that gives you the factor that you can use to increase your mileage. And you know, there's up to a three-year lookback, so that type of tax increase is available to y'all just in the normal course of events under Act 388. But also, you potentially could take advantage of or use the exceptions to the mileage limitations. The Act 388 does have several categories of situations where local government can put on a one-time surcharge, I think is what we call it. And one of the qualifying events is that you have a deficit in the previous year. And we've worked with a number of, not only counties, but school districts in particular, where that deficit is quantified, and they make a decision to remediate or repay that deficit or have the revenue to offset that deficit over any two or three tax bills. And so, for example, if it was a 15 mil deficit, you could have five mils, five mils, five mils in three separate years, just to get that money back in, to bring you up to that level playing field, which y'all really haven't been in in several years. And I know that nobody on that side of the podium, and y'all don't, you know, pay the bills, and y'all aren't responsible directly for having everything in order, but you do have consultants now who can help keep your books straight so that your audits can be in a timely fashion. That's one of the things that both rating agencies and bondholders look like, look at, and under the SEC regulations, and I tell people, that's not the Southeastern Conference, that's Securities and Exchange Commission. Because y'all have public debt outstanding, you've undertaken an obligation to file your audited financial statements basically by the end of January of each year. And when you can't meet that commitment, I mean, it's not a direct penalty, and the SEC is not going to come and, you know, put handcuffs on anybody, but those aren't good practices to have your debt well-received in the public. So I guess to summarize, I would encourage y'all to, you know, have your balanced budget and make sure that those numbers stick for the year, so you don't overspend in certain areas. I would encourage y'all to use what Act 388 gives you as an opportunity to either increase mileage for all times or increase mileage to eliminate a deficit, and then whatever you can do to keep, to get that audit on time so that bondholders and the rating agencies, et cetera, can be a little more comfortable with the lending of money to Williamsburg County. I'd be glad to answer any questions y'all might have. As I say, I am, I'm not here, you know, telling y'all that this is like doomsday, but I would sure like to be able to be here next year and say, boy, this is really great. We've got, you know, you've got three banks wanting to lend you tan money instead of us going hat in hand to one bank and saying, please, please, it's just better for y'all if you can have a robust financial position and then more competition, and that's better for the county and for the taxpayers in the long run.
All right, is anybody with any questions?
You mentioned the mileage increase perhaps over three years. Is there a way to extend it over to three years or no?
Well, there would be, there are two types of mileage increases, and one would be the regular mileage increases that Act 388 allows you to do. And when you utilize that provision of Act 388, say you raise 10 mils, that 10 mil stays on forever. That's like a permanent mileage increase unless a council later does something to reduce it or bring it back. If you're using the part of Act 388 that allows you to mitigate a deficit, then that surcharge only stays on as long as is needed to ratify or to eliminate the deficit. So there are two different types of mileage increases.
So potentially, it could go longer than, it could go as long as it needed to go to eradicate the deficit, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, yes, sir, and we've worked, and we would recommend, I think the longest we've ever recommended or been comfortable with was like three years, because the, you know, the purpose of that surcharge is to fix your problem, get it done, and have that mileage go off of the tax rolls. And again, that's different from, y'all might need to raise mileage, not just because of a deficit, but so you won't have a deficit in the future. And that's where regular Act 388 comes in. And there is a three-year lookback. I know y'all have been very reluctant in the past to raise mileage, and that's certainly understandable, but you have, in effect, banked, or you can have a three-year lookback in terms of the millages, the mileage increases that you could use today. That type of mileage increase is permanent. You raise your mileage and it stays there unless somebody does something to take it off.
Ms. Franny, thank you so much for laying it out and spun it out so in a way that it's easy to understand, but for those that are watching who may not understand the term mileage, can you break down what that is, please?
Sure. Mileage is a formula, if you will, that is the formula that takes the value of your property and the amount of taxes that have been levied by the county, by a city, by a school district, and you multiply out, and that gives you the tax bill. And it is, just in terms of pure math, for assessed value of $100,000, so if I lived in a home here in King Street and the tax assessor said it was $100,000, one mil of taxes would be $4 for that $100,000 house. If I'm in a $50,000 home, then one mil is $2. And so you would take the value of your home times the amount of mileage and do the math. But that's, it's a technical term, and when you look at your tax bill, you see an assessed value, and usually, an assessed value is a little bit less than what people think the property is worth, which is a good thing. And then there's an assessment ratio of 4% and times mileage, and that gives you the tax bill. So the 4% ratio is where we get the math of $100,000 owner occupied, one mil is $4 for a business, the assessment ratio is 6%. So for every $100,000 of a business, one mil of taxes is $6.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else with any other questions for Ms. Heiser? Ms. Heiser, will you hang around just for a few minutes? Okay.
I'll be here, and so if there are other things that come up as you hear other presentations, I'll be glad to be here.
And behalf, and on behalf of Williamsburg County and this council, we want to thank you for the many years of service that you've given to us and your hopefully continued years of future service and your wise counsel as it relates to finances. She and I have spoken quite a bit since January, and she's been giving us sound and wise counsel. And I think we need to be, we need to pay very close attention. She's been in this business for a number of years and has been with Williamsburg County the entire time, and so again, we want to, we want to thank you.
Thank y'all very much, and I'll be here to help in any way I can.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Mr. Chris Clark, who's a CPA. Mr. Clark is, he and Ms. Connolly are going to be on the screen shortly here through Zoom. They could not make it, but in person, but they did ask if they present in through Zoom, excuse me. So hopefully, we'll be getting them up momentarily. Okay, technology always works when you test it. But when it's time for it to actually go live, then something goes, oh, here we go.
Mr. Washington, I can't hear you at all. Were you asking me to speak?
Yes, one moment, Chris. We're gonna have to try to put you on a speaker. I can hardly hear you.
Okay, yeah, I'm driving. I've got a lot of road noise, noise going on.
I think we might have to turn the speaker up a little bit on there and then put the mic near the speaker.
Are you there?
Yes, one minute, we're trying to make some adjustments, Chris. Chris, go ahead and try to speak.
Say that again? Hello?
Yeah, hold on.
Okay, I thought you said something.
Well, can we just go ahead with Jeanette until, while you guys try to figure this thing out with Chris? You all, please excuse us while we work through these technical difficulties.
You guys can hear Jeanette fine, but not me?
Speak one more time.
Yes, Mr. Clark, can you hear us now?
I'm sorry, I'm having technical difficulties myself. Say that again?
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
All right, very good. We're gonna need you to try to speak as loudly as possible, because we can hardly hear you. Can you give us a brief overview of what you've been working with for us as it relates to the audit prep?
Sure. Can you hear me fine now? Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Chris.
Okay, great, I want to make sure you can hear me. Yeah, well, so, yeah, a little bit of my background, I've been doing governmental audit consulting work for about 30 years. I had my own CPA firm for 25 years in Columbia and Greenwood, and a fairly sizable firm, and left that firm back in 2021. And my expertise has always been doing basically CFO consultative services as well as audits, like Bailey does for you all, have audited various counties. So I've got a lot of background, I'm not a county expert, a lot of the things that Ms. Jeanette was talking about, you know, aren't my forte, but I've got command of the accounting for sure. So when I came in, first thing I'd like to say is, you know, you seem to have really capable staff in place. I do feel that there are some training issues with them as far as the proper way to carry about their duties in a proper manner and in an internal control, segregated duties, awareness mindset, as well as a quality mindset. I have, I've been placed moving you guys from QS1 Smith Data to SAP. Looking over some of the older reports in 2021, you know, the system was much more useful and meaningful reports that I could use that essentially now are not in existence. So it's been kind of a bad, tied behind my back. Will say that Meredith has been great, she has got a ton of expertise in finance, has been a godsend for me, for boots on the ground, but I will say, you know, your accounting is not very high quality. Now, I can't say that in regards to 2021, because I haven't really looked at those numbers, but I will say that there are material and significant errors that I'm having to fix that should have been maintained properly throughout the year. That's why you can't get your audit done. So what I will say is, if your books are maintained properly, you're talking a two or three week time period to get your books ready for your auditor. There is no reason, being at June 30 year-end, why your audit cannot be completed. The fieldwork, that's where they come out and do the audit, by October 31st, and your report is issued no later than December. You're a small county, relatively speaking. If the accounting is done in a quality manner and periodic reconciliations are done properly by staff as they post things to validate that they're doing their work accurately, then all this hubbub I'm going through wouldn't be necessary. What I will say is, I think if we can get this behind us and, you know, get caught up on 2023 now, because this year's almost over, we have to start on 2023 next, we can get the agency back to, or the county back to a quality accounting process. Part of the issue, too, is the fact that your SAP is not integrated with your treasurer, so you're doing double work. Everything that your treasurer does, the house is integrated within QS1, but we cannot use it because we maintain your general ledger in SAP. And so, I don't know who made that decision to convert that software. Obviously, they didn't get the treasurer's buy-in prior to doing so, because my understanding is she has indicated she's not willing to use that software. And, you know, honestly, SAP is not made for county governments, that's not its forte. So it's been a struggle, and I do feel good about, you know, where we're headed, but we still have a good bit to do. You know, the accounting is being done almost on a cash basis. I know we're talking about accounting terms here, a lot of stuff I'm throwing out. A lot of stuff I'm throwing out, cash basis essentially means that if the money, if the money hits your bank account or comes out of your bank account, that is the only time we account for a transaction. And if you will go out and look at anything on Google or whatever browser, web search engine you use, type in accrual accounting, A-C-C-U-R-U, hey, A-C-C-R-U-A-L versus cash basis accounting, and you will see how inaccurate that is. And so we need to get you to the accrual basis of accounting. County council should be getting reports at every meeting. You should be able to tell your cash position, your burn rate, where you are against your budget, where rev, tax revenues are against, you know, the billings, all kinds of metrics or a dashboard, if you will, so that you guys can operate. And Mr. Washington, I'm under, I think I understand that you're not getting anything like that currently out of finance, are you?
Well, we do do some, I've been giving council finance reports once a month as far as cash on hand. And about two months ago, we started giving them reports as to how much overdue debt that we have. Can you hear me, Chris?
Yes, and I, you know, so I haven't reviewed what, what you distribute to your, to your council members, but, you know, anytime you're dealing with an entity that is trying to work through financial difficulties, the accuracy and reliability, the data you're getting is, is very paramount. And all I can tell you is, based on what I'm looking at, I have almost no confidence in whatever you're getting. So I don't know how we're throwing that data together for you right now. And again, I don't, I don't want to bash the staff. I'm not saying they're not doing a good job. It's, it's really 100% turnover of people in finance, a software conversion to a program that doesn't really fit our needs. And then, you know, the, the lack of training for these staff on actually everything they need to be doing properly. You know, for example, let's give you one example. We use ADP for outside payroll preparation in the past. That payroll was processed in-house. All the postings of all the departmental expenses, all the payroll liabilities, tax deposits, and everything that comes through payroll was integrated and posted as part of the processing. There was no manual intervention. With ADP, what has occurred is now a file has to be exported out of that software and has to be hand keyed or imported, depending on what the situation is, into SAP. And what that has resulted in is a great deal of inappropriate, inaccurate postings to your payroll expense accounts, your funds, and your payroll liability accounts. And if anybody would want to come look at those with me, I'd be glad to show you what I'm talking about. So anyways, it's just been an uphill battle.
Okay, one moment, Chris. Is there anyone with any questions for Mr. Clark?
I, I think my question would be, um, as I understand, you said the software. Is there anything we can do with the software at this time?
Uh, Mr. Washington, he's asking about the software?
Yes, what, what can we do about that at this time?
Well, well, I believe we intend to go back to QS1. I mean, there's two options really, right? So one is force the treasurer to adopt SAP. Say it's not your choice, and I know she's an elected official, so I don't think we have the authority to do this, but you're asking me what, what the options are. One is to convince the treasurer or force the treasurer to use SAP, which I don't think, you know, will happen. And the other option is to migrate back to the program we left. I don't quite understand why you left it, to be honest. It's very confusing and perplexing to me why that decision was made, and it was very hastily done. My understanding is, I don't know if Meredith is present or in the room, but I think she received an email in February of that particular year saying we're going to new software and outsource some payroll July 1st. You can't do that that fast. And it was not a whole lot of proper planning with the team to ensure that it was successful.
Um, Councilman Wilson, to answer your question, our plans are to go back to QS1.
And so I, I would assume that that's step one. So step two, I guess, would be to look at various trainings that we would need for our staff. How would we be able to incorporate that and, and keep the availability of, of the staff working on, on day-to-day operations, um, working? So I, you know, just how do we get to that step two port, portion?
Well, the, the first thing we have to identify, and let me, let me back up a little bit, and Jeanette will be coming in shortly and will be able to explain it in a little bit more detail. Currently, our finance department is working with two separate systems. The old system that was purchased, plus the new system, okay? And so there's information in both of those systems, and that's how we're managing the finances. Whenever we began this, the, the process of the audit, the young ladies in finance are having to go between two separate systems to extract information, which is, as Mr. Clark indicated earlier, is realistically double work. But we're going to recommend, and what we're looking at doing is going back to the original system that we had, which has made some advancements since we've left. That is the same system that the treasurer is on. And so the information will be a lot more real time because we'll both be on the same system, which is how it used to be until it was changed. And so that's, that's what, what we're going to be recommending.
And so is there a timeline on that occurring? Because I, and, and I guess the thing I'm trying to get to is, when can we get the problem rectified?
Sure. Well, it sounds a lot easier than it is because we've got to go, we're going to be starting the next audit right after Mr. Clark is finished with this one. Because one of the things that I've said to my staff, to our staff, is that these audits have to be on time. It doesn't make sense for the state of South Carolina to hold up our finances or hold up monies that we really, really need to run the government because we're not turning the audits in on time. So immediately, we're going to take a couple of weeks' break to let everybody get a breather, but we're going right into the next audit to make sure that this audit is turned in on time. And then once, then we're going to begin that process of going back to the original software package. But it is not something that we can just snap our fingers and do overnight. I think that was the mistake that was made whenever they switched, was they thought that you could just snap your fingers and go from one software to another. It's easy to do that if the two softwares interface, which means they work together. But if they're not working together, then you're working off two separate software systems, which is, is what we're doing now. And it's, it's, it's chaotic to, to, um, to be totally honest with you. And it's created a lot of unnecessary work for our finance staff, and it's really, you know, has been a major, major factor in us not having this financial information as readily available as it needs to be. So that's a process, Councilman Wilson, that has already began. It's just a matter of just actually doing it. But, but the decision pretty much has already been made. I think that's going to be the best decision for the county, and especially as it relates to our finance department, for everybody to be working on the same system.
I have a question for Mr. Clark. He was stating that some of the reports that we were presenting probably are inaccurate as far as what monies we have and what we spent. I think if I heard him correctly. So my question is, when can we get something that, that is accurate to show us where we are?
Well, Mr. Clark and I agree on some things and we disagree on others. The information that I got, that I'm giving you all, especially as it relates to the monies that we have on hand, are the monies that come, are, are the balances that come directly from the treasurer's office. So that's, those are coming directly from the treasurer's office, who is responsible for collecting the monies and keeping up with those balances. So those, those dollar amounts are coming directly from the treasurer's office. So that's about as, um, that's about as, as clear-cut and squared away balances that you're going to get is from the treasurer's office.
Right.
Thank you.
And really, what I'm, I'm speaking to is expenditures. So of course, collecting your revenues is one picture, and then the cash you have in the account obviously is very, very important. But what's your spending patterns? And then those revenues that don't come through the treasurer, for example, water and sewer fees is one area. EMS billings for your, for your low country billings, your insurance claims, you have an awful lot of X and blast claims. Those are not being recognized on an accrual basis. Grant revenues, as they come in, may not be captured as revenue at the time that they are earned. It would only show up once the money gets to the bank account. So yes, I'm not, running, running your cash position and getting that information is not, that's only like one small piece of a financial picture. Yes, I'm, I'm not, I'm not questioning that whatsoever, and I haven't even looked at that. But yes, I know the bank accounts are reconciled every single month. We have bank reconciliations of finance that are forwarded to us from the treasurer's office. So I have confidence in the cash balances. But the treasurer does not see all of the revenues. Transit, transit's another issue. They, they have billings to DOT. Those funds are not billed timely always. And then again, they're not recognized until they're deposited in the bank. You know, there's just a whole host of examples that I could go over. From an expenditure perspective, we're not properly posting expenses to the right accounting period. So let's say we get an invoice in, and it's, it's dated August, but the service was provided in June. It may not be posted to the right month. It might be posted to August. That is not proper accounting. So that, that's what I'm referring to. Payroll accruals, you have a bi-weekly payroll. You should be accruing your payroll every single month then. So let's say you have a 31-day month. You only have a 28-day payroll paid out each month because it's two 14-day pay periods. So you've got two to three days of payroll that are not posted every single month. And then that month where you have three payrolls, then you get hit by all three of those payrolls. That's just not proper accounting. You know, revenue recognition and expense recognition is, is not something we're good at.
And one other thing I wanted, and thank you so much, Mr. Clark. One of the other things that I also want to add, just as a, a point of clarification, Williamsburg County does, has not and does not have the ability to have a robust finance team the way that some other counties do. And because of that, we have to hire CPAs to come in to help do what Mr. Clark is doing for us, which is called audit preparatory services, which is basically coming in and cleaning up the books. Then we bring in the external auditor, auditor, who then audits the books after they have been cleaned, cleaned up by the audit prep person, which that's what Mr. Clark is doing for us. What has been being presented to council in years past is the information from the external auditor. Well, the audit prep person has already come in and cleaned it up. I believe that it was, and I, I believe that it was most important for you all to hear from the guy that's doing the cleaning up, to see what needs to be cleaned up, not after it's been cleaned up. We need to see it before it's cleaned up so we know what, so council is aware of what we're working with and what we need to be doing. What we're doing here is trying to be, make sure that we're being transparent about our challenges moving forward. So as we plan to, and, and we do what needs to be done to move the county forward, to move our finance division forward, I wanted to make sure the county council knew what challenges that, that we're facing. And then that was why it was important for Mr. Clark to come in and tell you some of the things about what he is, he and his staff have stumbled across, and things that they have run into. But now there's light at the end of the tunnel. Because the good thing about, and, and I'll say this about Mr. Clark, he's not going to say it about himself. Both Mr. Clark, Mr. Clark and Ms. Connolly, Connolly and Ms. Heizer, one of the things that I admire about all three of those folks is that they have not come into Williamsburg County looking down on our staff. They've come in with an attitude and a willingness to want to help. And then our, and they've been met with employees who want to be better and who want to do better so we can provide a much better service and a much better quality product to the citizens of Williamsburg County. At the end of the day, that's what it's all about. It's making sure that we're providing the best citizens in, in, in the world, the best service in the world. And so with that being said, unless there's any other questions from Mr. Clark, I know we have Ms. Connolly who's been anxiously awaiting. Mr. Clark, thank you so much for everything that you do. We look forward to seeing you soon.
Yes, sir. I, I just want to say one more thing real quick. I did want to reiterate that staff, they just have to be told what to do and shown what to do that's correct. It's not that they're not able to do that. It's really how they've been trained or not. So I agree with Mr. Washington. It's all a matter of doing it right the first time and knowing what you're doing and having to understand what you're doing. So I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you so much. All right, Ms. Connolly. I think she's muted.
Good evening.
Hey, all right, that sounds better.
You can hear me?
Yes, ma'am, can you hear us?
I sure can.
Okay, just went, the volume went down, gentlemen. All right, Jeanette, can you kind of briefly give us a brief overview of, of what you've been doing with this and, and where we at and what we're doing? Just kind of brief county council?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to. For starters, you've already received a great deal of good information from both Ms. Franny and from Chris. And I will say that what Chris is doing, you know, Chris is, is your piece of the audit expertise, and I'm coming in with the budgeting piece of that for you. And so together, what we're doing should support each other. And some of the things that he brought up have been, have created issues in trying to create the budget as well. For instance, so when I started with you guys in January, you know, one of the first things we did was meet to kind of get our arms around all of the issues as a group that we were coming up against. And of course, not having the audit completed was one of them because that tied up some of your money with the state, a great, a, a large portion of money, by the way. And your tax money was going to run out within the next month or two after I had arrived. And we had the $3.5 million tan we had to pay for, so we had to withhold some of that money. So we started off knowing we were going to run into trouble even before the end of the fiscal year financially with not having any more money and not having the audit completed. So when we started on the budget, start, you know, we talked about the software issues. The first thing you want to do when you're starting a new budget process is to pull a budget to actual report to kind of estimate where you think you're going to end up fiscal year end and see where your budget to actuals are at that point. There was absolutely no way for me to get accurate information. There was absolutely no way for me to get accurate information because of this software changeover and the fact that the actual starting budgets were not even in SAP software. So basically, all they were doing was posting in the software just to pay bills, just to keep the bills going. And so there was nowhere for you to run one report that would say, here's the budget and here's the actual expenditure year to date at this point. And one thing Chris mentioned is that some of the, some of the things had not even been posted at that point. So you couldn't even know that the figure that you're seeing is actually, you know, year to date up to March or April at this point was, was the last report I ran. And then even looking at the actual budget itself, what we determined after I started building your, your budget document was that the same budget has been being used for several years in a row. So there's not really been, even though there's been information gathered from department heads, some of the information is, is inaccurate. You know, head counts, um, some people being actually full-time people that are shown as part-time or they're shown as, uh, part-time and they're actually full-time. So some of that has to be rectified. And some of that was coming to light when I was doing the calculations for, uh, your benefits and that type of thing, where I was coming up higher than I felt like I should have been in comparison to what I was seeing actually being paid out. And, um, so some of that has been the reason that we need to, um, take a good look at where we are once we get corrected information and we should have that this week. And then go back and that should, you know, try to help us figure out, um, our revenues versus our expenses and kind of see where we are in terms of how much of a tax increase we're going to need. And, um, and then have some additional conversations with department heads at that point if we need to. Another thing to think about is that not only is how, you know, getting this budget right, I, I feel like this is a pivotal year for Williamsburg, for all of you. Um, I, I think the county supervisor really wants to turn things around. I think you have staff that are on board to do that. And, you know, I, I, I think that everybody's really weary of continuing to, to handle things the way they've been trying to handle them. I've, I've watched staff in there. We, we would anxiously await to see how much revenue came in to try to figure out which bills we're going to pay, that pay period. And that is extremely stressful. And, um, you know, I'm hoping that between what Chris is doing and the support from Franny and all of us working together, that we pull all of these pieces together and turn this around for you. And it's, but it's going to take, even after this budget is completed, it's going to take having reports in place, and Chris mentioned this as well, having reports in place that everybody can easily read and understand and know what the financial position is at the county, you know, on a monthly basis right now. I would, I mean, when, you know, my background at Berkeley as their CFO, we at least did a quarterly report to council. But in your case right now, I would, I would say that you guys need to get a really good, uh, report set up after we get the budget up and running, that, that you, you know, that you can see monthly how your budget to actual is performing. And I always used to tell my staff, you know, and we would, we would look at budget reports and if we saw something get out of line, if you saw somebody burning through too much overtime or your personnel numbers looked like they were, they were not where they needed to be, then you started investigating then. You didn't wait till later in the year. You started then and turn it around so that you can stay in budget. Because then, when you're doing things properly like that and posting and, and, you know, what Chris said about posting things timely, then you have an up-to-date idea of where you are. And then when it's time to do the audit, that, that whole process is a lot, lot smoother. But you all have a lot of challenges that, that, um, you're taking on together. And, um, it could, this can be done. It's just gonna, it's gonna be hard. This first year is going to be rough. And even the budget that we put together, we may find some, we may find some inaccuracies as we go through the year because we are really starting from scratch. Because we really don't have any trend data to know what, you know, and the places that have been overspent, we really don't know what that department actually needs. We, you know, we don't know if proper budget transfers have been done or whether things have been posted maybe to an account that, um, for instance, somebody spent travel money and they didn't have any more travel money, so they just posted it to a, an account that they had money in. Those are the kind of things we're having to look at as we go through and try to build some trend data and make sure that what we're, we're putting out to you is, is truly a real budget this time. And that's going to take, it's taking a little longer because we are trying to work through some of these software issues and, you know, um, Fran, Ms. Franny talked about the, uh, tax increase and the value of a mill and that sort of thing. Right now, we're estimating your value of a mill as somewhere between 100,000 per mill and 105,000 per mill. To be on a conservative end, I would use 100,000 right now. And if we do that, 10 mils brings you only a million dollars. And I say it's only a million, but right now you're doing a three and a half million dollar tan every year. And, you know, so that already tells you that you're having to have that support because you, you probably needed to increase your taxes long ago. My understanding is you guys haven't had a tax increase since maybe like 2006. And certainly personnel goes up anywhere between, at a minimum, six to seven percent every year. And that's typically because of health benefits and that sort of thing. So, you know, your salaries are another issue. So there's a whole lot of things to attack, but we're going to have to kind of eat the elephant one bite at a time. And I, I feel like Supervisor Washington is doing all he can to bring in, um, people like me, like Chris, like Ms. Franny, who have certain expertise in certain areas. Um, I have a unique background that I served as county auditor for Dorchester County for 10 years. So I understand the property tax side extremely well. Um, and then of course, my, I served as CS, CFO in Berkeley County and, um, uh, finished up my years there and retired a year ago, February. And I simply do this sort of, of work now. So I think he's got a good team in place to help you. Uh, I, I won't tell you that I still think there's gonna, not, not going to be some struggles to try to work through to get you guys going in the right direction, but I certainly feel like things are headed that way. But, um, you know, I, I hate that we cannot get the budget done on, on, on time and have an actual budget and not have to do the, uh, continuing resolution, but I've certainly had to do these before. But I think this is the best thing, the best solution right now, so that we can put together a quality product. And I think that once you do receive the budget, you'll appreciate the time taken to do that so that we're all on the same page and we've got a good product to move forward with.
Okay, Ms. Conley, thank you so much. Um, are there any questions from any of the members of council for Ms. Conley? Anybody with any questions for Ms. Conley? All right, Ms. Conley, thank you so much and we look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, that concludes, um, the appearance, well, that, the first appearance. We now have, uh, Ms. Tara Good, um, who's the Vice President of Strategic Partnerships, and Emily Possett, Partnership and Program Manager with Climate Vision. They have a presentation, um, to present for us this evening.
While we're getting hooked up, I'm Jamie Morris from Emergency Management. Good evening, Council and Supervisor.
Good evening.
Couple of months ago, we were contacted by this company, um, that I believe is going to be very, very beneficial for Williamsburg County and its citizen. They'll go more in-depth, but, um, just while we finish hooking up here, but I believe what they have to present is going to be very beneficial for Williamsburg County and Emergency Services.
Ms. Tara?
Thank you, Jamie. Um, Council, Chairman Washington, thank you guys so much for having us, uh, here tonight in the lovely state of South Carolina and in, uh, Williamsburg County. Did you get it?
I broke us, then I fixed it.
Yeah. Um, we'll talk fairly fast so that we can keep it succinct, but please stop me at any time and ask questions. There's some technical stuff that I'll go through and, um, I just want to make sure that we answer any questions or concerns along the way. Um, Emily and I have the pleasure of doing this across the country. Um, we're very much excited about the work that we do in the southeast and I'll explain why in a minute. Um, but essentially what we're going to talk about today is a partnership that, um, we want to propose to, uh, Williamsburg County related to weather surveillance coverage. So, quick little introduction of my team. Um, there's myself, Tara. Um, this cause is very near and dear to my heart. Um, the work that I do in weather, um, started because I was sitting in a similar role as you all and as Jamie, um, working in a public service capacity for almost a decade in the southeast. Um, and three months into the job there as just a very young, uh, lady at the time, uh, we were hit by an EF4 tornado in my community, which was a fairly small community. Um, we lost eight children in our high school because we took a direct hit. And from that moment on, I, I always say you're kind of forever changed when you experience something like that. I had many other weather disasters that I dealt with myself. I grew up in the state of Florida, so very much used to hurricanes. Um, but that particular one stayed with me and that's why I do the work that I do today and I'm really excited to be here with you. And then Emily, do you want to do a quick intro?
Yeah, so I've been, um, at Climate Vision for the last two years. My role is to help find homes for radars in short and tandem with Tara, of course. Um, and then also oversee the installations of the radars as well. Um, so at Climate Vision, we own, maintain, assume all liability on the weather radars. Um, and then after we get them up and operational, our colleague Jonathan, he actually oversees the entire, entire network health, um, post-operation. So part of the reason we like to introduce ourselves is because we want to make sure it's clear that at no point where you, will you all be responsible for paying for radar, maintaining a radar, knowing how to operate a radar. We, uh, will be there the entire life cycle of the system and, um, you all will benefit from the data.
Thanks, Sam. Uh, so real quickly, why does Climate Vision exist? Um, we exist to fill gaps in traditional weather surveillance and I will, um, explain what we mean by that. Um, so we're really fortunate in the U.S. We do have the gold standard of weather radar networks across the globe. Um, that was the work that I did prior to this. I, I've helped build these networks in other countries trying to emulate our work. But, um, it's not without its limitations because Doppler Radar does have limitations the further away you get from a system. And so, um, I think you guys, um, have some printouts as well or maybe a PDF, but if you look at one of these images, um, to the right, um, of the national network on the left, um, you can see that there's a lot of sparse coverage there. And we here in Williamsburg County, we're sitting in the middle of one of those. And that's what we define as a weather gap. That's, this is where we place radars, um, to fill those, those gaps in coverage. Uh, why are we focused on the southeast? Um, you guys are just vulnerable. Um, we live in Kentucky, not too far from the southeast. I've spent most of my life in the southeast. We definitely deal with some extreme weather. Um, and just based on this report alone, you can see that a lot of the weather patterns that we, um, saw a few decades ago, they're shifting our direction. Um, so we have a real sense of urgency about placing these systems. And one of the top questions we get when we're dealing with our community partners is how do you pay for the radar that you bring to my community for free? Um, the types of gaps that we're filling, this is a, a known problem, something that a lot of emergency managers like Jamie are trying to find solutions to already. Um, it's a very new and novel approach to partnership. Um, we own the radar, we install the radar, as Emily said, we put it up at no cost to the community partner. And then we do monetize that information in other ways for other weather sensitive industries, some of which you can see here. Um, and in addition to that, we have other types of models that we sell that are forecast models that are not at all reliant on the radar, but that helps us underwrite the cost of the system and provide that public-private benefit. So a little more about gaps, as I mentioned earlier, it's a known problem. It is something, um, that we've been trying to solve in the weather community for many years. Um, the main barrier really is cost. A weather radar is really expensive. The big S-band systems that you guys are sitting in between here, they cost millions of dollars to not only install, but then also to maintain and operate, um, and keep operational for the communities. That's why they're not going and placing these big systems and all of these gaps and where we get the opportunity to bring the, the private, uh, benefit and partner with, with public, um, servants like yourselves. I mentioned earlier the limitations of Doppler Radar. This, um, graphic here just kind of shows you what we mean by that. The further away you get away from a weather radar, um, the higher up that beam is looking, just based on the curvature of the earth. You sit at a certain elevation, it's looking up, trying to scan for severe weather and it creates this kind of gap area down in the bottom. Um, and what that means is you're missing a lot of things. So, um, the, the most obvious way that I can explain that is we've all, um, experienced this where maybe we're sitting here and our phone tells us it's not raining and it is, or vice versa. It's a really frustrating phenomenon just when you're dealing with rain. But you can imagine when it's volatile weather that you're up against, whether tornado, flash flooding, hail, et cetera, it's an even worse and pronounced problem because you didn't even know it was coming in the first place. So it creates not only a headache for, um, leadership in a community, but especially for emergency managers, forecasters, meteorologists, if they don't know what's actually happening closer to the ground. Uh, and so this image right here really shows when we talk about sitting in the middle in Williamsburg County, um, everything in purple on this screen is a gap. Um, we are surrounded by weather rate, uh, National Weather Service weather radars in Columbia. Um, there's one, um, just north of Myrtle Beach and just to the south of you all. But those beams, when you're there looking in your area, they're shooting way high into the air, seven to 10,000 feet above you. So the radar that we're proposing to place on the water tower that you see in this image here is a very compact system. It's suited just for gap filling, um, and it would essentially fill in that void between all of those National Weather Service systems. Uh, and I'll talk a little bit about the radar really quickly and then Emily, I could turn it over to you on the, um, to go over the installation details. So we get a lot of questions about, okay, well, what's the difference between your radar and the one that the National Weather Service has? Well, the first obvious, uh, one is that it's very small. Um, it is not the type of system that you would install a network full of. Um, these are suited for gap filling purposes. They're designed for that. Um, they operate at a very high frequency, so they're focused on resolution. What we sacrifice in range, we get back in a really clear, clean, uh, crisp picture so that we can see everything happening lower to the ground. Um, the fact that it's a really high frequency makes it great for not interfering with anything else. It doesn't interfere with SCADA equipment, um, automated meter readers, antennas, radios, et cetera, because it's operating at that really high frequency. Um, and what you see in the C-band radar, which is something you might see from a television station or something like that, um, they're operating in kind of a mid-frequency, which is a really problematic frequency right now with 5G and broadband coming on. And then the final radar, which we call the Cadillac of Systems, it's the big mama of radars, um, 40-foot dish, uh, I'm sorry, 24-foot, 28-foot dish, 40-foot radome. They're very large and require a lot of infrastructure. So that's, that may be what you see near an airport or something like that, a, a National Weather Service system and only they can use those. So, um, Emily, I don't know if you want to touch real quickly on this case study or if you want me to take that one or?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so this was one of our systems, um, just outside of the Augusta area in Columbia County, Georgia, um, captured this year in January. Uh, but you can see on the left-hand side, this is showing what the National Weather Service was able to pick up. The right-hand side is what we were able to see. You can pretty, see a pretty clear difference in the, uh, quality of the data and pick up that tornado hook a little bit easier on the right-hand side. And, um, really, there's two reasons for the difference here. One, um, our radar was placed in the center of the gap, very close to where this tornado occurred. And also the technology was a little bit different. The X-band technology that we're placing, um, doesn't have as much range. Might need to talk louder. Sorry. It doesn't have as much range, but it has very high resolution data. So for purposes of gap filling, that's really perfect because you don't need the range. You can, you know, it has a radius of 60 miles. I don't know if we've actually, um, said that today, but the purple circles that you all saw on the previous slide that represents a 60-mile radius of coverage. Um, but when you're, you know, just filling a gap, you might as well take advantage of the really high resolution data and sacrifice a little bit of the range. So, um, that's really the, the two reasons why there's a pretty stark difference in the, um, two pictures here on the left and right.
And, and one thing I wanted to mention, when we, we hadn't touched on the National Weather Service or NOAA relationship so far. So the entire point of these gap filling systems is to help them do what they do. So at no point do, are we suggesting or would we suggest that we replace, um, the National Weather Service? All warnings and alerts come through them, but we are doing work with NOAA at the federal level to be able to get all of the data validated and pulled into their systems so that they can warn and alert with that new radar in place, the gap filler radar, if you will. Um, and so when we talk about this instance, um, in Georgia with our system, this particular radar was also able to capture the tornado much earlier than what the nearest next rad saw. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that we, we want to work together and we are working together with them. This is not a replacement for that kind of thing.
So, uh, just as a matter of clarification for the, uh, for the body here with council. So what you all are proposing, um, is to put a radar on top of the water tower in Salters. Is that correct?
That's right, yep.
Um, and Mr. Morris. You're not getting away that easily. You're not getting away that easily. As our EMD representative, is that something that you are recommending to this council?
Yes, sir. Because I believe it is a little bit more centralized in the county. It is one of the taller, newer water towers. So as they will elaborate in a few more minutes, it has passed structural. So the radar will work perfectly on this tower, and I believe it will cover all points of Williamsburg County within its radar.
Sure. And this will give us an opportunity to receive quicker, better, and more accurate weather information for our residents?
Yes. Like the last slide showed for the one in Georgia, it was more detailed, quicker, and like we were able to get the information as we're able, we will be able to see this information as almost as it comes out from the radar. So we'll have information straight from it instead of having to go to the National Weather Service and then come back out.
Sure. Now, ladies, the installation, do we have to worry about any structural damage being done to our water tower? And if so, Climate Vision is going to be responsible for that?
Yes, we would be responsible. We don't expect any issues. And I was actually telling Jamie that on our ride up, we actually got the passing structural analysis back from our engineers for the specific tank. So timing was great on that. But we absolutely do not expect any issues. We do a full engineering workup and all of the due diligence to ensure no damage to your all's water tank. We are in the business of public safety. We definitely have no intention of interfering with your all's public work, so.
And now what other jurisdictions do you all have this technology in?
Do you want to take it?
Sure, go ahead.
So we installed two per month. We just turned on our 14th, was that, and then began our 15th. Well, it was Saturday, technically. We lifted it in Louisiana. We have four in Texas. We have three in North Carolina, just north of you, Charlotte, Weygum, and Charlotte, Weygum, and High Point.
High Point, Georgia.
Yeah. And then Columbia County, as Emily mentioned, Americas, Georgia. Florida will have five. Georgia will have four when it's all said and done. So it's two per month, but we're on number 15.
And I realize I've sped probably through you all's PowerPoint presentation, but I kind of had a general idea of what members of council and myself are going to ask. But at this time, council members, you all have any questions while we have these ladies here? Obviously, this is not a decision that I'm asking council to make tonight, but it is something that I would like for us to take into consideration and vote on at a later date.
I think we have one more.
Absolutely, please.
Point that is the agreement that will be signed with the county.
Yeah, and I don't know if we have a slide on that. I'll just go through that quick, basically the, okay, it's not in there. This is probably the right slide, the last one that shows the radar installation. So essentially, what we do is we have a no-cost lease. So we provide the data back to the public leadership. So for instance, Jamie, anybody that you all deemed who would need access to the radar viewer, so all of yourselves, a lot of times it's the dispatch center, E911, et cetera, schools, that's a big one, too. They can get in at any time, log in, see the data moving across, along with all of the National Weather Service systems around you and the alerts and warnings that they have. Those are also plumbed in. And then the lease essentially outlines our obligations from a data perspective, and then our access to the site, and of course, our liability, which is very important. So we have a template that we go by, but we obviously defer to the leadership on what changes or edits you want to make. We just have a starting point that we're used to working with, but would want you all to weigh in, obviously.
Sure. Okay. Any members of council with any additional questions?
I just got one question, Ms. Supervisor. Just to make sure I'm clear, it's no cost to the county.
Correct.
No upkeep to the county.
No.
No maintenance from the county. Costs millions of dollars, some of them.
Yes, some of them.
What's the catch? Who pays for it?
So we do pay for it. That's, we're able to front the expense because the data is monetized in other ways for different types of purposes, such as agriculture, media, et cetera. So from our perspective, we can do a public-private partnership. We can provide the public benefit, knowing that the only way that a community is going to get a weather radar is to either apply for a grant, which they don't typically award these for, they don't typically grant these because of the cost of ownership, not necessarily the cost of purchase it. It's really cumbersome to own and operate it. And then we can sell that data to other folks who use it for a different reason.
And that's my point. I'm not trying to get too much into your business, but like, who would you sell it to?
Like TV station, insurance, agriculture. They consume it in a different way. You know, they might have some kind of API or, you know, different type of platform that they'll pull that data into and make decisions on, maybe decisions about when to seed or when to harvest. You know, insurance, did hail happen in this particular area? Those are just different types of use cases. Events, you know, outdoor events might want it for that kind of thing.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Do you guys have any other information?
No, that's all. First of all, thanks for letting us come. And our contact information is here. If you have further questions, just feel free to reach out.
Sure.
You can reach one of us at any time.
And Mr. Morris, if you would, please follow back up with me on this, and so we can get back in touch with county council to see what decision council would like to make about this.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Absolutely. Thank you again, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. There's another appearance on the agenda for the clerk, but I don't believe that she's here. Is there a representative? Is there a representative? From the clerk's office, okay. With that being said, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is executive session, to discuss, to have a discussion of a contractual matter regarding economic development. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Hammond to go into, Councilwoman Hammond, to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, okay. There's a second by Councilwoman Hales. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we will be in executive session. Thank you.[1074.52]
All right, can I, um, all right, thank you so much, uh, for your patience. Uh, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So move, Hammond.
All right, so we have a motion to come out of executive session by Councilwoman Hammond, has been seconded by Councilman Floyd. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
He didn't hear you.
All right, there was some action taken in executive session. Um, we, um, want to entertain a motion to remove the table from our first reading, um, action that was on our agenda, to remove the table for the first reading of that ordinance, um, that we had scheduled for first reading tonight. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilman Lee, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Wilson, are we ready for questions? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we also gonna need an, a, we're also gonna need a motion to amend the agenda to remove, uh, Williamsburg County Development Corporation from, um, this first reading and replace it with Project Baxley. And so I'll go in, I'll read, uh, what we'd like for it to say. Uh, first reading title only and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a good and sufficient deed conveying the building and improvements located in the town of Hemingway bearing TMS number forty-five dash four-six-six dash zero-four-two located at Baxley Road, Hemingway, South Carolina, and also known as the safe auto building to Project Baxley. All right, and so we have a motion to amend that, is there a motion?
So move.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hammond, is there a second?
Sure.
We have a second by Councilman Lee, are we ready for questions? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion has been carried. Um, let's see. All right. The supervisor does not have anything to report, uh, this afternoon. Um, is there anything from any of the members of council?
Uh, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, sir.
I think we still need to do the title reading. We did the amendment, but we still need to do the first reading of the title.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you say again?
We did the amendment, but we still need to do the...
First reading.
First reading of the title.
You're absolutely right, Councilman Wilson, thank you so much. So we're gonna have first reading, title only, uh, and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a good and sufficient deed conveying the building and improvements located in the town of Hemingway bearing TMS number forty-five dash four-six-six dash zero-four-two located at Baxley Road, Hemingway, South Carolina, and also known as the safe auto building to Project Baxley, that's our first reading. Uh, is there a motion to accept first reading?
Motion for first reading.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Floyd, are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion has been carried. Um, as I indicated earlier, there is no, um, information for the county supervisors' report. Um, council, do you all have anything to report? Any members of council? No one? All right.
Motion adjourned, Mr. Supervisor.
I didn't even have to ask for it. Okay, I have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Floyd and a second by Councilman Lee. Um, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Well, y'all spoke up loud on that. All right, thank you all so much.